Well, typically I would be giving you a packet for him.
Yeah.
And it's not.
Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are not in need of a temporary clerk tonight, and I like it. Clerk Cody, would you do a roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Milky.
Here.
Treasurer Rogers.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Lannan.
Here.
Trustee Lay.
Here.
Trustee Theron.
Here.
Clerk Cody here.
All present?
Yep.
We have light agenda tonight, agenda tonight, but I'm happy to entertain any motions.
I move to support the agenda.
Support.
Motion by Rogers, support by Brown, any discussion? See none, all in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Agenda passes unanimously. Presentations, we have Commissioner with us tonight, in fact Chair of the county.
Nice.
You have the floor.
Seems like I ought to introduce myself, it's been quite a while since I've been here, but it kind of happens in May when we're doing planning season and everything, so. Anyways, give you a quick update, I know. Trustee Lannan does a real good job of covering our meetings, but just like everything else, it's hard to believe that we're almost into six months already into the budget, but we've been, basically that's what we've been doing, we've been working on the budget. We moved the budget schedule up a little bit from previous years because we want to get a little more work done on it. One of the big factors is we've been working with the new wage study, so we're revamping, it's going to be a three-year, of course, you'd never make everybody happy, but we want to make sure that we're in the marketplace to keep our people that we have there. So we kind of set up a new system, put up a new committee where we're actually studying, trying to keep ahead of it, so, you know, go three or four years and doing a study and then say, oh, we're out of practice, so. Also working on a little bit of an appeals process so we can get ahead of these a little bit, instead of waiting till the last moment, so excited about that. Budgets look pretty good at this point, of course, we've just been through the first breath, so we're putting a little bit of money, trying to get two and a half, you know, positions for the sheriffs, and then our public defender's office is looking in to put through his grant, is going to have two corrections officers, which will be able to free up time there too, so if we work with the state police, I think we're getting there, and hopefully the next year we'll be able to increase on that a little bit. Real quick on the sheriff, and we were going to bring it on, I know one of the issues was that he was really, the building, the new building, we're cleaning up on some of this, we keep thinking we're going to be done, but there's always one little last thing with the jail project, so. And also with the tower project, we're getting done with that too, so the big, two big projects will be getting off our plate. Even though it hasn't been approved yet, it looks like it probably will be on Tuesday's meeting, we found a way to finally find some money, or the sheriff has, for some body scanners that we thought was really needed for the jails, so actually they're running a promotional deal that the company's dealing with. Big reduction there, fifty thousand dollar grant, and then there's money in the commissary fund that will probably fund it off, so it will not be any deduction out of the general fund, so there was, there was a way they got it done, so with that, I will take some questions on board. Real quick, I don't want to come up here again, I have some pamphlets telling what's going on for Beale City's one hundred and fifty year anniversary scheduled on there, you guys talked about different faces, I said you walk around Beale City and a lot of the guys got beards, and sometimes you've got to look twice to see who they are, because you've got a hat and a beard on, and everybody's starting to look the same, gray beard, but I did not get into the contest, but I might let this little go, just for a month or so, so with that, there's no questions, so.
What's the dates?
July thirty-first to August third, it's got all the events on there, so it's long, I got them, so. Okay?
Yeah.
Would you be willing to leave a few on the desk right here?
I can.
That'd be great.
Thank you. And thank you for that, that brings us to item seven on the agenda, public comment, public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on the agenda, if you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, at seven oh five, we will open up public comment.
There's nobody on line.
Thank you, let the record show nobody's connected remotely, and no one's coming forward at this time, so we'll close public comment at seven oh five PM. That brings us to item eight on the agenda, reports, boards' comments, current list of boards and commissions, appointment is needed, we've been talking about the board review, and suddenly we get two applications for board review, which is great, because it does allow for the possibility of filling an alternate seat. With that, if anybody's so inclined. Or motion to appoint, but.
Oh, okay.
I'll make, but, so just for clarity too, there is one open regular seat, and there are technically, I think it's two alternates, correct? Yes. One alternate, might, forgive me.
I'd make a motion we appoint both Mr. Hayes and Ms. Stein to the board review.
Can you do it separate?
You have to do it separate, okay, all right, well.
It's a good idea, though.
Okay.
You can motion that, but.
Okay, well, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Hayes to the board review.
Would you refer to, just for clarification, the third seat or the alternate spot?
Alternate.
So that would be with term ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty, oh no, I'm sorry, twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six?
Yes. Support, I need to tell that.
Motion by Rogers, support by Cody, discussion?
And then it's for the alternate?
Yes.
That was the motion.
Yep, okay.
So the alternate on our list indicates expiration date at the end of twenty twenty-four.
It's wrong.
That's wrong.
Yeah, board review by state law is a two calendar year, so, I mean, all those seats would be the twenty twenty-six term.
Okay.
Twenty-five and twenty-six, I should say. I'll just comment that the nice thing here is the board review generally only meets three times a year, and the next meeting will be in July, so this would give an opportunity for any new appointees to get some training. Motion's on the floor, any other discussion?
I suggested Mr. Hayes for the alternate because he's already serving on board, so we appreciate him wanting to serve more, which is great.
And it's not unusual, the alternate gets to step in.
Yes, I'm sure.
See no discussion, we have a nomination to appoint Mr. John Hayes to the board review alternate seat, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Mr. Hayes is appointed unanimously.
So I'd make a motion to name Stephanie Stein to the board review, third position, open seat, with an expiration date of twelve thirty-one twenty-six.
I support.
Motion by Lannan, support by Lay, discussion? I'm just thrilled that we have two applicants for the board review. Okay, see no discussion, all in favor of appointing Ms. Stein to the board review, terminating twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six to the third spot, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Ms. Stein is appointed to the board review unanimously. Thank you for that, board. Reminder, we still have an EDA one seat that's open. That's a little tougher, because ideally they're, they live or work within the EDA districts. So with that, move to board member reports, item eight be on the agenda, trustee Theron.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay.
Next meeting, I'm sure I'll have something going on.
Clerk Cody?
I submitted the reimbursement for the school election in May, and we received it back already, so.
That's quick.
It's a little over ten thousand, or under eleven, but yeah, it was pretty quick.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Lannan?
Two reports, one goes back to May fifteenth, when I sat in on behalf of Treasurer Rogers at the May fifteenth road commission meeting, a few items that went on, a couple of design engineering quotes were approved for work on Vernon Road and Rollin Road. They had three trucks that had been purchased, they had received one truck at that time, and so possibly they've received a couple more since that meeting, not sure, though. They're doing some work around the Littlefield Road boat launch, which will probably makes boat enthusiasts happy that utilize that Littlefield Lake, or Stevenson Lake, which actually it may be. Meridian Road has been paved between baseline and M twenty, looks great. They have four new employees that were in training, they had mentioned, and that pretty much summed up that meeting. Also, I attended yesterday's Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting, the committee of the whole and finance committee meeting. Just to reiterate what Commissioner Chairperson Angler had mentioned, this is a really big deal. They brought in front of the board, the sheriff brought in front of the board, again, an opportunity to purchase a whole-body scanning security system for the jail system, which is an important device for the safety and security of all folks involved, whether you would happen to be incarcerated there, or if you're working there, it's a very handy device, and as mentioned, there was a maiden American discount offered that really worked out well, that it passed to be purchased when it went through in the voting process. So I know the sheriff's department folks are really excited about that. Financial report was given regarding receivables, expenditures, and in general, between the departments at this time of year, they're kind of sitting roughly, on average, about sixty-eight percent of the department's budgets have been spent for what has been budgeted at this point in time, and it was reported that they're in really good shape and are where they would expect and hope to be as far as the budgeting goes. They are going to utilize a consultant to help assist with a request for proposal for equipment as modifications may be going forward at the recycling center to help that consortium of like eight counties that are looking to work together out of there, and just to reiterate, it was mentioned, I don't remember by who, but there's a hundred and fiftieth anniversary for Beale City coming up, and I tell you, Commissioner Angler, if it was half as fun as the hundredth anniversary one was, it'll be great. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Trustee Lay?
I've got nothing.
Treasurer Rogers?
I will be attending the road commission meeting tomorrow, and the big news is the tax rule is established and moving forward, the great team put that together.
Awesome, and I have nothing to report at this time, so we will move on to consent agenda, happy to entertain any motions regarding that, and I do want to ask who had warrants this time?
I did the warrants and everything was clean.
Good.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Theron to approve the consent agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? See none, all in favor of the motion to approve consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously, we actually have no new business tonight, that's odd, but that's okay, so that'll take us to item eleven, extended public comment, extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue, if you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we'll open up extended public comment at seven fifteen PM. Welcome.
Hi, thank you, my name's Alison Cetera, I've lived in Union Township since two thousand and seven, and we live right down Lincoln Road that way, so a couple of things that I think would be very, very helpful to consider adding in this township is a left turn light at this corner here at Lincoln and Rumus. I've there lots of times of the day, and I just think that would be very safe, that's even before I've seen the cross with the death from years, a few years back, so that's one thing that I wanted to talk about, and the other thing that I wanted to talk about is, I think it would be really great eventually to add wider bike paths out this side. There's all the, so I've lived in Mount Pleasant City since eighty-three, so I've seen all expansions all around, everywhere, but in this side too, we've got so many businesses, and I see people ride their bikes to commission and aging, and I like to ride my bike, and down from Pickard that way, it's so narrow, and then out on River, you've got all the subdivisions and the church and golf, so I just think it would be really good to add more bike trails, like they can come from campus all the way down here, that's what I came to talk about.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Your comments are really appreciated. Just checking to see if you want to come up again. Okay, no one's still connected remotely?
No.
So let the record show that, thank you again for your comments. I'm sorry, would you be willing to state your address for the, for the record, it's a thing?
So it's eleven zero one south.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will close extended public comment at seven seventeen PM, that brings us to item twelve, managers' comments.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
We have final board member comment, despite that we have one item left on our agenda, closed session is being proposed at least, but with that, final board member comment, Mr. Brown, trustee Brown's, my apologies.
And I am also tonight, thank you.
Trustee Lannan?
I'd just like to lift up and mention the work of the folks at Union Township and the manager in regards to the financial audit that you guys reviewed last week, so encouraging to see that, it's not the first year that the audit has looked so well, so we're certainly have established ourselves as running a financially sound operation, and was really pleased to see that, thank you.
Trustee Lay?
I've got nothing.
Treasurer Rogers?
Nothing to say.
Trustee Theron?
I would just like to say that I appreciate the comments tonight about the bike paths and the left turn lane, I think they're both very important, we've had a little bit of discussion about the Lincoln and M twenty and about being dangerous, and I think part of the discussion was they may not be done on the other side, that's why it's not necessarily lined up like you would like it to be, but none of us know when that's going to happen, and I think it's worth the conversation of trying to talk with the right people about what, what could we do, because that is a very dangerous corner, I mean, you just, you can't move either way, at least safely, until, until it clears, right, so.
Would that be M dot, or would that be road commission?
That was my question, too.
I think, I think per our last discussion, it might be M dot, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent, it's M dot, so I just think it'd be worth, maybe the board, I don't know if we send a letter to M dot, just expressing our concerns, I'm sure they're well aware of it, but even though there might be something done in the future, I believe when the other side is completed at some point in time, I think that has to do with rightaways and those types of things, I still think it's worthwhile to put some sort of light in there now.
I avoid, yeah.
Potentially save some lives, so. Thanks.
I avoid that intersection at all costs.
I can't avoid it, I think. Clerk Cody? I wanted to comment on the, on the bike path as well, given in the public comment, thank you for that, in general, there's been broad support by this board with that type of projects, but it's awesome to hear too, so, yeah, so thank you for that, and I was going to bring up the light as well, so it's clear that we know that that's M dot, and I agree with you, trustee Theron, that a letter from the township doesn't hurt to say.
It's if the board desires that.
Yes.
Certainly.
Okay. Just a note, following up on trustee Lannan's comments regarding the audit, it is quite a few years in a row now we've had a, what do you, what do you call it, unmodified audit, right, where very little dings, if any. Years ago, I believe it was Supervisor Barker, who was elected in two thousand and eight, I think, put the township through, at the time was new by the MTA Township of Excellence, and Union Township, there were three categories of this, and I'm hoping you remember these, there were three, three categories of excellence, and the Union Township was the first to ever be awarded Township of Excellence in any category, and we were the first to be ever awarded two awards of excellence in one of each category, we never made the third category, and it happened to be finance, do you remember? Do you remember what the other two were?
For one, I want to say public safety or fire almost.
Okay.
For whatever reason, that kind of sounds weird saying that now, but, and I may be wrong, and, yeah, I don't recall, but I know it was a big deal, and we're very proud of it, and it would have been a lot of work to continue to go on and hit all six of the categories.
I thought there were only three, there was six?
I think, I think there's like six categories.
Oh, I remember the finance one at the time, but that, that was back like two thousand and ten, that we did not meet the finance one at that time.
Yeah, there are some deviations that were improved upon.
Yeah.
I'm looking it up.
Township of Excellence, yes, so Union Township was the very first to be awarded.
In what state or?
In Michigan.
Oh, Michigan, wow, that's awesome.
And I believe my memory is correct, we were first to get two, I believe. Just a note, we had a couple members missing last time, hopefully watched the meeting, we had some discussions on policy three point ten, and it was directed by the board that the management team should draft some changes and bring that back, so I anticipate that we'll be bringing something back at the second meeting in June. And with that, that brings us to item fourteen, if this board is so inclined.
I move that the board meet in closed session under section eight, one C of the Open Meetings Act to discuss strategy and negotiations connected with upcoming collective bargaining negotiations with townships, labor unions.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Brown, everybody clear on the motion, any discussion? See none, do you need a roll call on this? Would you do a roll call of the board then, please?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Treasurer Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Trustee Lannan?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Theron?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes.
Motion passes unanimously, we'll move to closed session, take a few minutes to get situated.
I'll get it, Frank. I'll get it, Frank.